And we are now live.
Morning. This is Joseph Chen, School Board Members, San Marino Unified School District. Right now, at the nine AM, I'd like to open the section. First of all, I'd like to talk about the postal call to connect the public comment. All meeting of the board of education are open to member of the public. And this publicly notice as a confidential cross-section. As allowed by the law, member of the public may address the board as our light in the public comment section of the agenda. The audio of all the meeting is recorded and a member of the public may be held liable for any reluctance or otherwise. Formulary statement. In consideration of the board and a member of the audience, please turn off silence your cell phone while in the boardroom. The San Marino Unified School District encourage those with disability to participate fully in the public meeting process. If you need a disability related multiplication or accommodation, look in the observatory aid or service to participate in the public meeting. Contact the assistant to the superintendent at the J D E L A T O R R D at S M U S D dot U S O two two six two nine nine seven thousand extension one three one zero at this forty-eight hours before the scheduled board meeting so that we may make every reasonable effort to accommodate you. Document provided to the majority of the Board of Education regarding an open section item. And this agenda will be made available for public inspection in the district office located at one six six five West Drive, San Marino. During normal business hour in addition, such writing in the document may be viewed on the district website at the W W W dot S M U S D dot U S. Let's go to the older local Mr. Song. Yes. Mrs. Ryan.
Hi.
Mrs. Gia.
Yeah.
Mr. Chen. I. Next, a fresh salute. Please stand up and I would like our. Will you write?
Yes. Yeah. Alright, you're ready to hand over your card. Let's allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, please, a pool of agenda. Do I have a motion to a pool to create a agenda? Do I have any second?
Second.
Local, Mr. Song.
Hi.
Mrs. Ryan.
Hi.
Mrs. Gia.
Hi.
Mr. Chen. I. And Mrs. Lynn. Okay. The public comment. A communication from the audience concerning matter on the special board of education meeting agenda may be heard at this time and not responded by the Board of Education. The Board of Education has adopted four policy nine three two three B to ensure the public's right to be heard in any matter attending to the San Marino Unified School District. Person who wish to provide a public comment will have a three option to submit a public comment. First, submit so a live form, submit so a live form. And the way the public may submit the public comment for the open section on the June ten twenty twenty-five from four PM through two PM. Sunday, June nine twenty-five. Comment received during this time will not be read during the meeting but will be provided to the Board of Education. Do I have any public comments submit via the live form?
For no comment.
Thank you. Second, request to the speak during the meeting via the room during the public comment the meeting where post for one minutes to take the request to speak. The raise hand function is used to take the request during the public comment period. For online attendee, press the raise hand icon to add yourself to the queue or phone attendee. I start line, the speaking order will be determined based on the order of the request received. Individual speaker will be unmuted and the call to the speak. Mr. Hall, please post the meeting for one minutes to be to connect the public comment.
Do not have any attendance.
Okay. Third, request to the speak during the meeting in person via the public comment card. Please complete the public comment card and submit the completed card to the designated box with the assistant to the superintendent. Opportunity for public comment are offered prior to the cross-section and at the start of the regular open section for matter not on the agenda and for matter on the agenda. The Board of Education reserve the right to add a public comment earlier prior to any individual item on the agenda. One minutes may be allowed to each speaker and a maximum of twenty minutes to each subject matter. However, in the event, there are more than four speakers on the same subject matter. The board president retain the description to adjust and limit the time associated allocated to each speaker to ensure that all wishing to speak will be heard within the twenty minutes allowance. Do we have any the public comment card at this time?
We have no card.
Okay. Let's go to the agenda for strategy planning, Dr. Deletory.
Thank you and good morning, President Chang, members of the Board of Education, executive team. And we are here this morning to work to develop our goals for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And before we begin that, I just want to do a brief recap of what we accomplished yesterday. Yesterday, we had a facilitator from CSBA California School Boards Association come in and facilitate a session where the Board of Education was successful in developing their communication norms and protocols, which will be incorporated into a governance handbook in the future and used as a reference when we are communicating at the board level with one another. And I'm really excited about having those communication norms put into place because I think that that's going to be a roadmap for us, which makes everyone's job a lot easier going into the future years. We were also able to identify what the Board of Education needs from the superintendent in order to facilitate clear communication and build trust. In addition to that, we were able to ascertain from the superintendent what the superintendent needs from the Board of Education in order to successfully fulfill her duties and responsibilities in school district. In the afternoon, we had a comprehensive presentation delivered by our executive team members, which basically outlined each of the four goals that we had put together last year and the school district's ability to meet or work toward each of those goals was recorded in full detail. We've reported data on each of these areas so that the Board of Education could get a good sense of where we are today with each of these. I just want to go over them briefly. Goal A was provide an environment of safety and wellness. Goal B, develop and implement fiscal health and sustainability. Goal C, demonstrate a conscious culture of service value and appreciation. And goal D, prepare students to be high quality global citizens. And as I recall, last year, we had a lot of conversation about defining what it means to be a global citizen, which really helped provide the school district administration with direction on how to work toward that goal and accomplish many of the components of that goal this year, which was done. I also wanted to just to share a couple of things from the Governance Core. It is a book that most of you have read in the past. It's authored by Davis Campbell, who was a longtime serving CSBA Executive Board of Directors, President, and he has a lot of experience in board governance and superintendents working together cohesively with boards of education. It's a well-known research fact that high performing boards are excellent communicators, that they have two things in common. They have a unity of purpose and they have a shared moral imperative. So I'd just like to take some time to ask the Board of Education what it means to you to have a shared moral imperative. And we talked a lot about this yesterday by the work with the Board of Education. Anybody want to offer their definition of a shared moral imperative?
Doing the best that we can for the students.
Absolutely.
Serving the most students the most.
Right.
Like every single one of them.
Yes, every single child, right? All children. Um, anybody else want to offer any variation to that? Or do you all agree with Board Member Gil's definition of shared moral imperative?
Definitely, but also to kind of uplift the idea that students are supported and that in unison, we need to move in the same direction. So while we may not always see the how or how we arrive at a certain decision, we also want to support each other because it's that shared vision that's really important to guide our, our, our work.
Very good. This is not, that's our unity of purpose, right?
Right.
But being students that are interested in explaining it, right? For our shared moral imperative.
Focus on the word imperative. When we use that word, when something is imperative, what does that mean? Right? It's absolutely essential. It's critical. We have to do it right now, right? It's, it's important. It's imperative. So if we have a shared moral imperative, that is something that we need to be conscious of constantly. Um, because it's essential, because it's important, because it's necessary, and that's something that we have to have at the forefront. And it is important for all five board members to have unity of purpose, as Board Member Gil pointed out. And as Board Member Ryan pointed out, unity of purpose is really critical. It's essential. It's important. If you don't come to the boardroom with unity of purpose, there, there's going to be a need to have discussion about the differences that you have. Because nothing gets done, right? Without a, a majority of the board agreeing to support an initiative, a goal. It doesn't happen unless you have the majority of the board. And it's not important that you all agree all the time. You can have differences of opinion. You can have differences, different ways of looking at certain situations, and that's all okay. But if you can bring it back to a central point, being a unity of purpose, what are we here for? And ask yourself that question, right? Why are you serving on the Board of Education? I assume it has something to do with your shared moral imperative, which is that you are doing the work of our students, of our kids, of all students, and you are representing what is best for them. I had a superintendent who was a mentor years ago tell me, if every decision that we make is in the interest of the students we serve, who can criticize that? Right? If you always ask yourself before you make a decision, how does this help or hurt children? How does this advance our shared moral imperative? How does this represent our unity of purpose? How does that, how does this decision help us in the work that we're doing to ensure that every child in San Marino Unified School District gets what they need from us? You ask yourself that question, you will never go wrong. You will always make the right decision. And the Board of Education has to make difficult, difficult decisions. Decisions that sometimes need to be explained, decisions that not everyone agrees with. But those are important decisions and you were all basically given the information that you need to make these important decisions. Sometimes information is confidential and cannot be shared with members of the public. And it's a hard position to be in because you want to tell your story and you want to defend your position. And what makes that difficult is by virtue of your position, there are things that have to be done related to personnel matters that are done behind closed doors, right? And in closed session. And the law supports that for a reason. Personnel matters are private, they're personal, and they should not be shared with members of the public. There are some exceptions to that, and we all know what they are. But for the most part, that work is done behind closed doors. And so being a board member is not easy. There's a lot of responsibility resting on each of your shoulders. There's a weight that this position carries with you, even when you are away from the boardroom. It is a twenty-four seven position. And I admire and respect each of you for your integrity, your strength of conviction, and staying true to your unity of purpose and to your shared moral imperative in always putting every single one of our kids first. That is incredibly rewarding work. It's difficult work, but it is rewarding, and there is intrinsic value in that. And every single one of you does it out of the kindness of your heart because you care about kids and because you care about doing the right thing. And I admire and respect that, as does my cabinet and the community, the community values that. So before we launch into our goals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, I just, I, I wanted to make sure that you had a foundation on which to build, right? Some of these goals, you may want to carry over into the next year because of the importance and value of those goals. You may want to create new goals. And we have given you all the information yesterday in order to deliberate on what, what is the district doing well? Where can we improve? I think Dr. Richter said it best. What are our blows and grows? Where are we glowing? Where can we grow? And every school district has areas where they can improve, and we want to constantly look at how we can do a better job on behalf of, of the students we serve. So I just would like to keep that in mind as we move forward. And so I want to take this opportunity to start with the first goal that we're going to put up on the board for twenty-five, twenty-six. Are there goals that you would like to carry over and maybe expand on for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
For, for me, A is still very important. Physical safety and the social, emotional, mental health aspect. So I think we do provide an environment. I, I think that we could say continue or continue to innovate. I mean, we could, you know, do more and we can always, but we need to continue to support students in both those things. So I would like that to stay in some capacity.
Okay. Any other thoughts from the other three board members present?
I like A and B.
A and B? Okay.
I like A and B.
Okay.
Definitely, I think A and B is the new important. But she, we, we can have a working instead of current statement, yeah. She.
For B, we, oh, sorry. I was just gonna say for B, we have developed and implemented. So I think, I think we've done a great job on our, as well, help. And thank you, Dr. Troy. But I think that there, there's some new wording for like next steps that I think we could definitely do. That's something I'd like to.
Okay. Maybe something around the lawn, perhaps? I don't know. That's going to be something that is really.
I don't know if that's too specific.
Okay. I mean, it's up to the board, but.
Oh, yeah.
Is our four, four member agreed with one continuing to keep the A and B?
So.
Yes.
So for me, it, it has to do with keeping some of it, but as subcategories.
Right.
So I'll just give an example like D, preparing students. We're always preparing safe environment for students. We're always preparing students to be high quality global citizens, right? But if we embed it, if we embed in that Fox presentation yesterday on AI, how does AI incorporate in this citizen digital world that they're entering? And then again, I'm going to harp on the fact that we already have initiated and implemented programs on our sites. So I want to integrate that. I don't want AI to be standalone. Okay, you teach this, teach that, teach cyber, you know, uh, you know, ethics or whatever. But I, I really want to see it integrated into the curriculum that we're doing as we're preparing these students. So I, I don't want D to be standalone, AI to stand alone, but I want to integrate it from our program.
I think integrate, integration is a great word, more, you know, across all of our programs. So we're looking, like we talked about holistically, right?
Right.
Holistic trial, but also holistic approach. And I think we should, you know, include that in some way. I would love to see, you know, like transparency word somewhere out here because I feel like we are very transparent and it's always one of our goals to, you know, nothing's behind closed doors that.
Right.
Unless it's obviously a confidential student. But the way that, and that's, and that's also integrated into everything, into our financials, into other, any other aspect. So like Shelley was saying, it's really important that none of this really stands alone.
Right? Okay.
Before we move, we all pay the A. You have to finish the question. People, we all will be.
Yeah. Yeah, like the spirit. Spirit of, of.
Are gonna carry over in the language.
Linda's work will always incorporate all of that A, B, C, and D. It's not necessarily like just for gold. It's all of our goal, right? But, but at the forefront, when we're developing these ABCDs, you need to make sure we go to a higher level, right? Because that may be for the foundation level, but we need to go.
Okay. So I'm, I'm just taking some notes down here because I want to make sure that when we're ready to do those bullet points that we capture what you're reflecting in your conversation this morning. So, okay, let's start with A. Is that okay? Does everybody agree we can start with A? Let's focus on that. Provide an environment of safety and wellness. What does that mean to you as a board member? What are your expectations for the district? And how can we take that to the next level and reframe that maybe with still the spirit of providing an environment of safety and wellness being intact?
When we, then we are go to the next, maybe higher level for the safety and awareness. I, I, I think right now, this, this is the good opportunity because we, we just pass for the major end. So we, we have some resource. We can do on the safety issue. Yeah. Well, safety issue, I think, if I took two category, one is, you know, the goes to our, our player, our, our hardware, we're gonna build it. Or like that, that, and then we get to the, those, the safety call even better. And another one, safety mean the children, they are in a study in the school. We, we, we need to make sure we create is a very friendly, another host type. I'm sure. But I, all my personal opinion of safety is include this two category.
Right? Right. So what we're looking for is how we're going to frame our goal. And you'll notice we're using action words to start each of our goals. Provide, develop, demonstrate, prepare. So we want to be consistent with that. And our goals need to be both attainable and measurable. And so provide an environment of safety and wellness. You can, you can keep that language or we can keep it for now. And provide instill will provide really is, I think, the most important. Good morning. For that goal, what do you, what do you all think?
I want with the cabinet, the board of voting, I also like, like
Yeah.
To participate. The this, a
Yeah.
Which is a team, yeah.
So.
One have a data or also a computer update. Actually, A, B, C, D. For that. But it is, I mean, always second year.
If I say enhance, an enhanced environment of safety and wellness.
You say that. Enhance existing environment, enhance environment of safety and wellness.
Enhance and evaluate. If it's already been implemented, a lot of the things like.
The framework, yeah.
Yeah.
Right? Uh huh. Right? We have.
Because if it's not working, if it's not working.
We remove it, right? Okay? We revise it. All our.
We're on A.
Yep. Enhance and evaluate an environment of safety and wellness.
There's this kind of big, big issue now. One of my friends, son, he went to the Campbell, I don't know if he's interviewed, high school, ninth grader, they just died.
Oh. Campbell Hall?
Yeah, Campbell Hall.
Oh, my God.
Just stuff. Safety is becoming more and more issues and.
Okay. So let's think about the, the types of things that the Board of Education really expects us to do. What does this mean? We're going to put underneath this, this broad-based goal, what it means to guide our staff and administrators on being able to work toward this goal.
Okay, first of all, before we want to give, give, elaborate through the higher level, but at this, I, I didn't want to take the first couple of months, this review for the California Education Call about the safety issue. So, so give the, the board a, a bash about those we need to reinforce. With that, I mean, we cover all the, 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 the basic foundation issue. And then in the meantime, we, we want to enhance. So, so what I'm just saying is like to evaluate and then later.
What I was thinking about is, yes, thank you, Mr. Chang. What I was thinking about is the way that we would evaluate is, is taking just the, the safety side of the house is through inspections. And what I'm thinking about is the physical safety of the premises, right?
Conducting regular safety audit.
Yes, and we have a, a risk management firm that is contracted with our JPA that comes out as an example and looks through our science classes to see if we have any. That comes out as an example, uh, and looks through our science classes to see if we have any chemicals that need to be stored. Uh, destroyed, uh, recycled, you know, whatever it may be, removed. Um, and they do that at least annually. And so we have ways of evaluating how safe our classrooms are in terms of the physical safety. Uh, when you're talking about student wellness, um, there are surveys that could be done, I know that our uh. Wellness centers are collecting data. Uh, that can be evaluated to assess how how often the wellness centers are being used. Uh, what what purposes it's being used for. The efficacy of uh, the the counseling that's being provided. Can be evaluated through uh, the users' surveys and feedback. Um, so there are ways that we can do that. Um, in terms of evaluating the education code for the safety and wellness. Um, I think we're already there, like we've got that done. Um, we're very solid on what we're required to provide. Um, I think we're at the place now where we can, you know, take it a step further, um, and especially now with. Uh, bond proceeds, we're going to be able to perhaps enhance. Some of the safety features that we currently have for lockdown, lockout, that kind of thing.
May I um, just make a word suggestion to evaluate first, because first we want to evaluate and then we will enhance um, our safety. Because we're gonna look at what we have and then grow from there. Um, just as a action plan exists, um.
So. The board agrees, we can do that.
You gotta get enhanced.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I see it as a cycle, right? You evaluate, you enhance, and then you evaluate again, then you enhance, and you evaluate again, it's a cycle.
Do you want to put continuously?
Uh-huh. Yeah. Continuously evaluate and enhance.
Environment of safety.
Okay.
And or an ongoing, ongoing or continuously? Maybe continuously puts too much pressure upon.
Now, continuously is changing the consistency of what we've done, it's not really an action word.
Right, that's true.
So we could say, we could put that down here, right?
Yeah, like.
Ongoing process.
On work, yeah, safety audits, staff training. Protocol handbooks for new employees and which I'm. Always sure we go.
Training, maybe?
Yeah, true. I think, I think some training um. With regard to wellness could also be, like if, if we're looking at uh. Sort of practices, I think that if. If a teacher flags something, that that should be part of our integrated services too, like that should. Then loop in our wellness center and loop in our school psychologist and.
Yes.
Parents.
Right.
Parents probably first, but for, you know.
Yes, um.
But also the training on like uh, crisis response, I mean, because, you know. Hundreds of those.
Yes, crisis response, um, so we're talking about two things, we're talking about the physical safety of our campuses, and we're talking about the uh, mental well-being. Of our. Of our students, what about our staff?
Yeah.
Right?
Both, yeah. And and we we, when we, because we're we're going to evaluate, so we also need to evaluate. We evaluate about the uh, the. And access to the the help, like the. You know, the consulting or the referral, eventually. Who were there more sick, you know, they had to refer to outside.
Huh.
You know, the agency or the some of the health provider.
Outside referrals?
Yeah, outside referral, yeah.
I um, I would like to touch on um. The. Like condition, classroom conditions, um. I think they should be clean and tidy.
Uh-huh.
I think that we should, if we have some sort of framework around that, then it could be monitored.
Right.
Not, you know.
Yeah, and lose restrooms.
Yeah, right. Yes, this fun link is definitely goes into there.
Yeah, yeah, restrooms, classrooms.
And uh, playground food.
Yeah, all of our equipment should be A.
Take a look at the popping up, I know, I know we don't have any problems, but.
Oh, yeah. They do have cameras.
Yeah.
Very clear cameras.
I don't know how we're gonna eat, has that still pop from that? You never have.
They. Supervision, adult supervision.
Well, I feel like there's some um, there's some spaces on our campuses that are not currently covered by this video, and I think we need to enhance and increase. Um, the camera um. Footage or coverage, um, because we don't often get what we need. Um, if it's not there, so, and we have done a lot of that work through Verpata. And through the grant that Dr. Choi was successful in wiring.
I I I really liked what uh, your crab talked about uh. Customer service based safety approach, so I would love. Um, an administrator every morning meeting the kids at every site, somebody needs to be out there greeting them. Because that shows that they're seen, but also that's.
She's still hinting that I go and open the door.
Shelley needs to be, Shelley needs to be at every school site every morning. But uh, I think, I think that goes a long way, just that first greeting in the morning. And I mean.
Yeah.
Happy to do it too as a board member, if that's something they wanted, but I think. That when the, when the principal sees, the principal will see who's not supposed to be there too, if that's an issue.
Yeah.
Well, you know, one, I I know that at least Harper, um, you know, principal called all is out there every morning, I don't know about the others, but, but.
Very, very is, very several lot.
Okay, when I drop off, I mean, that's.
But we're just enhancing the.
Can you see, I, I mean, I think we should lean into that uh, practice, I think it's gonna help me at least say practice.
Okay. I think, i- is there anything else that you think is missing? Up here, you think this is good enough to move on to the next one?
To add the the conditions, I would say bathroom condition.
We have.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We have that. Okay, all right, so we're gonna move on then to.
Oh, last thing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no worries.
Still processing. One of the safety issues um, that needs to always be considered are special populations.
Hmm.
Our EL kids, whether you speak the line, whether you don't, um, whether you have a disability. Uh, hearing, whatever, but. Yeah, we need to make sure that there are safety protocols in place. In terms of not only a collaborative work with the nurse. With playground, supervision, with all of that, that's related.
Uh, should we include, we could put, I mean. Safety and wellness uh, initiatives are like bond priorities, the physical aspect of that. Seems like that's what our parents called for.
Yeah, say that again, uh, what's your first up?
Well, measure M, make it a priority in the measure M ending.
Yes, okay.
Projects. I don't know if that's where you, if you have that in there, but I think it it should be.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. So then let's move on to B, which you all agree. Um, and maybe we should check with uh, Joanna, um, before you got here, the the board was agreeing to carry over goals A and B. Uh, basically taking it to the next level, now we've already developed and implemented fiscal health, sustainability is ongoing, of course. So um, we were talking about changing this goal to reflect where we need to go with this in the future. Um. So that's where we are, do you, do you like that language? Do you want to change that language?
Ensure physical health. Okay, and sustainability. I would have focused on transparency.
Yeah, I think transparency needs to be in there, I think um. Do you think this, sustaining fiscal health?
Your fiscal.
And sustainability.
Uh-huh, we need to add transparency.
When we're in there.
Yeah, with, with transparency. How about increase fiscal transparency?
Build on. Which one do you like? Increase, build on.
Hey, increase. I like ensure.
What about ensure fiscal health and sustainability through transparency and ease of access? Because what people are asking is that we have these dash, right, and like what we're doing, clear gov, which totally fits into this.
Make sure it's measurable, if it's a smart goal, ensure.
Yeah.
Doesn't, you know.
Right, yeah, that's true.
I insured, um, yeah, like.
Well, I mean, how do you? If you increase or enhance or elevate, that's a measurable.
Yeah. So, uh.
Before, right?
Do you want it to increase or elevate?
Yeah, I would elevate, elevate fiscal health and sustainability, but I think we should put. Through transparency and ease of access.
Yeah.
That's very deep. But we're saying elevate fiscal health, I mean, we were. We're, we're already at a really great fiscal health, so we're further elevating that, I feel like that's like.
That's why I thought.
But by the next year with the budget.
I feel like you need that, I like, I think we need to elevate fiscal transparency, which is.
There you go.
Elevate.
I like that.
Fiscal transparency.
There you go.
Sustain.
Sustain fiscal.
Sustain fiscal, yeah. Um, no, that's, that is, that, that is. Through sustainable fiscal. No, oh, it elevate fiscal transparency.
Yes.
Through sustainable.
That's, 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 I could.
But transparency.
I know, that's a, that's a.
Which we are, yeah.
Uh.
Uh, that's why we can ensure, make sure it happens, fiscal transparency.
Yeah.
And sustainability. Sustainability is so important in the sense of.
Right.
We need to keep this district going year after year, and it's not a, it's not a business where you're, you're able to.
Yeah.
Store profits and use like, so it is, sustainability is so important, and that goes to like.
Right.
The sustainability of our various programs that we're implementing. You need to continuously evaluate, like with the Mandarin dual language. We have a waiting list, so that means it's sustaining itself, like we are, it's. Valid and keeping that program going, think about that, so through evaluation.
So. By the way, you know, because I, I think the the V or what we are doing uh. What this year, well, I would like you to.
Yeah, but it might be suggesting, I'm, I know, yeah, I've been looking a lot about transparency and.
Yeah.
The the truth is, you're fully transparent in your finances, right, our financial reports, we meet all of the requirements. Um, I I think what's, what we we can do better is not. Increase transparency, but rather educate, is to promote, like, uh, make sure there's an increased level of understanding. Of of simple.
Population, because they don't really understand the.
Unless, I think that's why I meant like ease of access, because people can't. People can see it, but they don't understand it, so they aren't really accessing it, right?
Right.
Um, I kind of see ease of access as something we put underneath though, right? Because we're going, that's what we're going to do to make sure it happens, right? Is to create ease of access. So how do we write the goal so that it accurately captures?
So, just what he said, through education.
Elevating to fiscal.
Through, through community engage.
Elevate fiscal understanding amongst community members through education.
Yeah, can we say like promote weight of fiscal transparency? You know, you want to.
Okay, so my is, my issue is kind of like what Stephen has said, I, I agree, I agree with like the, using the word transparency, I think is a, it's a. Very important word optically for people to see in our goal, because it is something that is. A priority, right? We, we want everybody to see everything, but they don't necessarily understand where it is. Like, how to read, what it means, and evaluate it, um. That's why I go back to clear gov, I think it's amazing, because, and they can see. Like, you know, um, but, but when we say. Increase, it it sounds like we're not doing it, yeah, because we lost, and you're right.
We're probably, we're built, like built.
What about? Exposure.
If we're a state of understanding.
Or develop a plan.
I like understanding.
That, that. Optimized. It's the right word, that is. Educate, optimize fiscal resources, optimize resources for community.
Access?
Access.
And somebody a little bit.
Team fatigue, walk, come on.
Walk, good job.
Uh, we're, now we're just word farming.
Yeah. Okay, that's what, try to see it, right? It has to make sense to you, it has to make sense.
What is a way of saying something about like, um. Layman's terms, like something around that, because, like, I kind of touched on yesterday, sometimes. In our shorthand, we don't. Uh, take the time to stop and explain to people who are not. Like at every meeting, at like, and sometimes it sounds like to us we're being overly repetitive.
Yeah.
But people drop in here and there, and it's important. Very, okay. So, oh, maybe something about clear. You're awesome.
I'm a good chat, you can see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And for a couple, uh, promote community awareness and understanding of the district's financial landscape. Foster financial literacy and transparency through updates.
Foster.
Foster.
Okay, yeah, okay, say that.
Foster what?
Awareness and understanding.
Sorry, what did you say, foster what?
Community awareness and understanding, if that's what we want to go with, I mean, we can write it down for now. District's financial landscape or.
I I have some works to suggest as well, and so taken from their website. Our tool is designed to help districts tell their financial story. Right, so if, if we can incorporate, you know, fostering. Um, sharing our financial story, and then to build public trust, that's really. The goals of.
Yeah.
Why uh, their government says.
Understanding of. Uh, what, what was the rest of that, Lena and I'll pick on.
Financial landscape. Districts.
I was saying the district's financial landscape.
Or better understanding?
It is good, she said it felt understanding.
Yeah, foster community awareness and understanding of SMUSD's financial landscape. Is that, is that?
Cooperation and decision-making, financial planning.
Full of money. Yeah. Um.
But it's a totally different goal to me than being fiscally sound.
But we are fiscally sound right now, right? So we've accomplished that. Um, and so maybe you need a new goal, right, that enhances where we are. By the way, this is always going to change in San Marino. I mean, if I die tomorrow, I want you all to know. That this is going to change, we're not always going to be fiscally solvent in San Marino because of the way that we're funded. And because of our circumstances. So just know that, that goal is gonna change, because what goes up must come down. And when it comes down several years from now. Right, we need to be, be building goals that address that reality, right? So this could be where you want to go, because you already have fiscal sustainability, well. I mean, I say sustainability, but for the the near future. I mean, I say sustainability, but for the the near future, right, for three years out. Um, but what is it that you want to accomplish now? That we have really met that goal, because that goal was develop and implement fiscal health and sustainability. We have reserves, right, that speaks to the sustainability.
Yeah.
We have fiscal health. Um, we really check those boxes, so then this makes sense to me. This is the next place you want to go. And you're saying that that's what the constituents are, right?
Yes. And I I'm on board with that.
Well, you you know, the the four uh I guess if the A and B, we are keep like a keep a B mean that we want continuing fiscal health. But in the meantime, we find out that there's something we need to address in this community, because if people, we we provide some data, but they still don't understand. I don't know if that will get another goal. This goal is a uh fully addressed the how we we can make the the ci- citizen or school parent understand more about how to read the uh fiscal health, how to read the safety, how how to read the how create a curriculum. That's the routinely, you know, this kind of question. Some some of of the the parent, they they don't understand. Either they they haven't get kind of uh the background, and so they they so so I don't know if we need have another goal, fully just help who understand each.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, okay, so are you saying that this should go under, under the existing goal?
No, I mean, the it's another goal, maybe.
Create a new goal.
Maybe that's. It's a really just. It's just offer a a a vehicle for the at the school community to understand the finance.
Yeah, I think.
Curriculum or safety. How we.
But are you saying you want to keep B the way it is? And you want us to do that?
Oh, we add another one.
Yeah.
Those keep keep them.
That's you, okay, oh, oh, so.
They're different.
You want to keep B?
Yeah.
And this becomes C?
Even B and now we can have a we can have a new word. Because like now, even we just address this one look like we already missed the workers. We need to continue.
So you want to say.
Fiscal health.
So so B is sustain fiscal health? Fiscal health, sustain fiscal health?
Uh.
Transparency or fiscal health and what? Because.
No, the B is not open on the transparency.
We don't need to.
Transparency is the one I I I thought maybe another goal. This is like the the education office.
Yeah, okay. But what do you, how do you want to change B? We need to change develop, because we've already developed.
How you you like?
Or sustain or something.
That's the last word in the goal?
Oh, yes.
So how do you want to change uh the first word?
You're gonna somehow just maintain it, right?
Maintain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's good, yeah.
Are you guys good with that, maintain?
So fast that you can't visit.
Sorry.
What was it?
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yeah. What what shall you, what was the one it's true, we think the B, I believe, and the the one we just talked about, what made the B into goal? This was like keep the B, which which I can't agree.
But but that's what I would.
Okay, so I guess that's what my brain was sort of on to when I said that's a totally different goal.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do think, like you said, it's ongoing for fiscal.
Yes.
Wellness.
That's.
So B, the things we need to change the wording and develop and implement, because we obviously need to develop. So change the wording and maintain that. And now. Yeah, you did. That's where we go. I try to.
Are we, are we also going to evaluate and enhance like the other ones?
Yeah, yeah, we 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 look at the T.
No, 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 but I'd say like. Those are good action words.
Okay, uh maintain and implement fiscal health and sustainability, right? Right, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we have foster community awareness and understanding of SMUSD's financial landscape.
G, can we add more than just financial?
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
Why don't we just stop after understanding of uh of like the district? Um. Maybe this is somewhere where we could put you know, your holistic approach that we had that great presentation.
Of SMUSD's uh financial. Um.
For gold season, we need to not just foster.
Yeah.
Right, it's everything.
Community, the greatest, um SMUSD story.
For you.
Yeah, work.
Operations, uh work. Purpose, goals.
Mission, vision.
Mission and mission.
Mission and mission. Um. Well, I I just feel that's about, you want to really, yeah, but we can get into it underneath here.
Because then you're like.
Yeah.
Fiscal landscape.
Um.
You know, I think it would be great to do lots of stuff where we have more community awareness and engagement. Think. What about foster community awareness and engagement? Because.
Uh, okay.
The people who are always saying they don't understand what's going on, don't compensate. Or don't don't open the email or don't, you know, or.
Right.
Uh, and and I know that we have to um overcompensate, but we do a lot of different touch points with parents' work, we do emails, we do, you know, website, social media, I think we could put our P I O under that goal.
Right.
I agree, that's a.
Yeah, yeah, I think this way is uh better. Otherwise, all your miss, all the some the this card app. Uh, I don't think it's addressed for transparent, they use it only.
Might even suggest the word from gold or former code C, which is appreciation, so not just engagement, but also appreciate all the things that are happening here.
Which which one?
So for this goal of using the word appreciation, that there's a lot of things that the district is doing.
Then people don't know what we're doing. You know, there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes that people don't really know about, but I think that has to, this goes down to the P I O. So we don't have anyone constantly telling our story. I'm constantly telling the story. And every month when I meet with our P T A leadership, um, one of the things that I started this past year is having presentations from each of the uh departments. So Ed Service comes in and does a presentation, Business Service comes in and does a a presentation, H R comes in and does a presentation. So that our P T A leaders, boots on the ground, can have a deeper understanding of what's happening in the district, because they're out there talking to other parents constantly, and so they can tell, help tell our story. And they can help educate, because they know what's going on.
Yeah, so basically delegating, educating the public to and empowering them to tell our story as well. Like with your with your student.
Yeah.
Advisory council, that's a great thing that we should. Is this like having your, the department head explain to them the inner workings of the district, they had no idea.
Right.
And I think this is also where you elevate student voice.
Yes.
We really, we want to stay student centered in all our goals as well, right?
Right.
And second goal, I'm sure all the this year we need to focus on the city negotiation. Uh, all of these.
Yes. A little supportive network. For for C, I think we should solicit feedback on programs, you know. Or just solicit feedback, because that's something that um some people have mentioned, was why aren't there more surveys, you know?
Okay.
Um. About what they want. It is great to survey the kids, they feel they feel empowered too and um. So I guess maybe instead of student advisor, we can say advisory councils. Or create advisory.
Give me a strike student and put advisory council? What do you? I think you're talking about the student advisory council now.
Yeah, I was. But I was just wondering if it's broader than just students, but I don't want us to have to create groups under than not.
I think you've got that here, solicit feedback from parents, teachers and kids, like be able to solicit feedback in different ways, either through surveys or um groups, uh coffees with the board president or coffees with the superintendent, um we can do that a lot of different ways.
Be responsive to.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't mean just the superintendent is responsive.
Right.
Looking at, I want to again emphasize various sites, cabinet levels, mid-tier, I mean, everybody has to respond, right? So it shouldn't be you.
Right.
No, but what I'm saying is oftentimes it rests on her, so I want to emphasize that it's everybody in this room also, right? Living board members, so if somebody's got some questions, we should be able to explain. Um, and not always like, well, Lena can tell you. Well, yeah, Lena should be able to tell you, but I should also be able to give you.
So like a here, consistent, unified message from us, I mean, but I think there should be a unity of shared message.
Here.
Yeah, because because if the messaging is very important, you know.
When messaging is important.
The measure our success, I think, can be credited to the messaging of smaller classrooms, like and parents value that, so. If we are all on the same message that we have agreed to as a board and cabinet, I think um that trickles down then to school sites as well. And that's really like who we are and it's our culture.
Yeah.
Right, as a school. As a as a school district, I mean.
If go back to the.
B.
The B.
Yeah.
Any out issue? Uh. Still, you think there's any opportunity enhance the revenue?
Always looking for opportunities.
Well, I mean, that could be it. Continually explore. Or.
Explore.
Revenue.
Revenue stream.
Brand.
And from the H R, the retirement, they could help for.
Get them to go, yes.
They've been.
Yeah, I think that would go to strategic planning.
Uh-huh.
Um, it's very important that we don't just put out fires that we plan and much for our success in um having H R talk to business services, you know, the fiscal, what we talked about yesterday is so important. Uh. And when those two departments, because our biggest expenditure is obviously people. So. That should be integrated, yeah. What about something like um holding more like coffees of a budget explanation? I thought the one that you did for our senior residents was good and decently attended at Valentine, I think. Uh, can continue like um well.
Outreach.
Community forums for budget discussions. Outreach. Because that lends itself to transparency, transparency.
All that plus.
No.
I mean.
So we are set for money, but.
Josh, you put the jokes, yeah.
Cold jokes.
Cold jokes.
Okay.
And then the 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 uh research about the cost of textbook.
No, I mean.
To the physical.
Yeah, right, yes.
And and we're doing that as we go.
Yes, Mr. Chang.
And we just kind of inherently maintain and implement.
Um, but kind of like we are.
How much is how much is where involvement? How much do you have idea?
For the digital?
Yeah, plus the transition, the textbook to digital.
We want transparent budget, you want to put transparent budgeting, I don't know, something like that. Yeah, I think that um programs need to be evaluated for sustainability.
Adaptability, you have to be able to adapt a budget, because let's say, for instance, you um you expect a student attendance to be a certain percentage, right, but all of a sudden you have some attacks on family through ICE, then a number of your kids are stressed, and so now you've got to pivot a little bit as your attendance went down, like I'm just, I'm not saying San Marino, but what I'm saying is it was happening in Pasadena. And so we need to be mindful of that. Our funding is.
Um. Yeah, and also, I guess, I think incentivize increased ADA across school sites.
Incentivize, incentivize.
I I think incentivizing increased ADA across school sites, so say, you know, if they can raise their ADA, um I don't know, like, it could be cost free rewards to students to um appreciation, I I don't know, but.
Yeah, really good attendance.
Non-attendance could be better.
Yeah, always could be better, yeah, yeah.
No, it's excuse absence, you know, attendance, right? Excuse.
Yeah, it's just whether it's excused or not, um.
I have a case, like I have to go like put my kids like just one day for the competitions, whatever, but the middle school told me that, oh, since it's just one day, you cannot give the money. It's like the studies, we have to. Oh, I don't know if there's a way that it has to, even if it's one or two days, but it's used to increase the.
I know that like in the the high school um absence recording, it says for a sports that.
That is.
Yeah, um like a college trip, sports, or that's it, you can always put personal.
All right. For me, I have. Yeah, I was.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay, so how much work you've done already?
I know, you guys are good.
Appreciate us. That's right, you're so on the back, um.
This one now finishes the three goal.
That's good. What about uh D?
Did you go home first?
And like, we didn't even have to decide which uh kitchen appliance would be.
We could do that, though, it'd be fun.
Yeah.
Oh. I could bring Legos and just like, yeah.
Lovely.
Corporate offices, so.
We're getting also a bridge, I think.
Fill the bridge.
Was a T T where, you know, after Ryan's uh suggestion, we can. Uh, suggestion, we can buy AI global work then. And I thought.
Oh, for D? Yeah, what about? What about it say more like? Prepare students.
Prepare students to be.
I think workforce success and character development.
A the design of high quality or the research. Text.
Literally.
It's complex.
Yeah, but that could be a bullet point. What it is.
We're gonna keep the the title, though, prepare students to be high.
No, we're, I think we're done with little students.
You're done with that, okay.
Right?
Okay. So what's.
So I, yeah, I mean, I I have came up with on prepare students for workforce success and character development. This workforce success, I mean, that could be through their next step is college, but. That everything is changing too, I mean.
Yeah.
And that's okay, like, we we need to encourage all paths.
Well, you know, the since we we mentioned about CTE. Right now, so we need a cabinet to give us the the idea, it it it's like. This is the time where we are going more on the CTE and give the. The the student for the future, um, the work with operation, yeah.
Prep students with the necessary.
Wherever.
With skills necessary, just to the workforce, all costs, strong foundation, I think.
We we.
It's too obvious.
That was the first one I said, Frances. It's the first one you said. That one.
Prepare students for workforce success.
I wanna say for college and workforce success, I'm just wondering if some of our parents might.
Understand that that.
Postgraduate, what about postgraduate?
Okay, say that again.
Prepare. Students.
We should go on to go to work now.
For postgraduate success.
Postgraduate success.
Three things.
I mean. I I mean, yeah, they don't wanna work, I mean, they might not necessarily work or go to college, so yes, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It can just be.
They just need this.
Or a post graduate.
Okay.
So maybe the the kids design that for a college, so we should track them how they pursuing after college.
Yeah.
We kind of need to see some, what do they do?
But I think like, I like how we talk about AI, I think they need to, you know. Learn an ethical usage. And that goes to. Her building character and integrity. Last year, I know we talked about resiliency, which. Is great for kids too. And adaptability, resiliency and adaptability.
You know, the first one she said.
I'm just throwing out words right now. I was being.
So first question, first one, I I I think I'm like the embassy. We have the society issue. Erica is very important.
Develop high moral character.
Yeah. Ethical behavior and high moral character. And moral character, if you doesn't agree.
We also, we also need to be aware of the, not just political, but the career. Paths that are on right now, like, right now, they're even saying in various studies. That computer science and technology is at a wall, like, it's not moving like they thought. And it's really in the healthcare that it's, you know, exploding, so we have to be aware of. Jobs or the successes or the achievements we're guiding the kids towards, right? Because it's our offering, right, what we're offering, and then whether or not it's doable, like, it's, you know, it's great to be a such and such major. But then you come out and after, you know, studying it throughout high school and then into college, and then you're struggling, the first year. Kid, even internships don't necessarily give them a leg up, so these are the statistics or reports I'm reading. And I I want us, our kids, to have morals that are open, rather than this is what we can, you know. There's a lot of our money should be poured into that, because we are essentially preparing them.
Right, and that that goes back, that goes back to what you were saying about CTE pathways. The state of California is really focused on an expansion of CTE pathways. Because they recognize. Sure, is not necessarily going to be in the traditional paths. And so I know that the state's investing heavily in that, we've been involved in conversations with the president of PCC. About expansion of CTE pathways, and as a matter of fact, they're building a. Gosh, a huge new building at PCC, it is going to be the headquarters for their regional CTE. Pathway program, Dr. Richter and I just went to. Sort of unveiling of plans for that building, and they wanna have partnerships with the high schools in the area. That could use that facility, one of the things that they're thinking about is building. A place where people can learn their trades, because there's not enough people in the field of construction, and they need to rebuild Pasadena. And so the mayor came forward, they all got together and decided, we need to educate. The future generations in the trade, so that we do have enough workforce to be able to rebuild when these devastating fires happen. So they're gonna be focused on that, but they're gonna also be looking at a whole host of other areas. And I think one of those other areas is AI that you have all been focused on. So we should be looking at ways that we can build.
Enhance CTE pathways. Community partnerships or partnerships and.
Since Sherry mentioned about the the future jobs, they're. Focus on the healthcare, so I I like to share with with each of you. What's 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 going on in the the last five year? The ten year, you know, the surrounding, you know. The graduate, high school, you know. Twenty years ago, I think because we have some parent, they they are background. Yeah, they're like the physician. So twenty twenty years ago, they just wanted to take to a medical doctor. But because of the competition right now. I think right now is a more acceptable, accept, you know, just work for the healthcare. But when you work for healthcare, that not just the medical doctor, you know, the dentist. Like like this year, we have one. You even I know, you go to another big name school, but it's a five-year pharmacy. Over, they get a pharmacy, pharmacy chairman. So so I mean, the right now, they finally, because of the competition, because of the need. So then the the. The parent or student, they realize that even there's not. For the medical doctors, or they can choose a lot of the the healthcare job workforce. Also. Before, I never heard like people choose upon the nursing. Actually, actually, nursing also is a very good. Job, yeah, so so right now, we have. You know, the student, they go to the nursing, they go to the PP. Yeah, so so I we also need to give them a. I think there's a career center may have to. Share this kind of information. As if. You will you see the what they get to their idea school. If we we can divide to the two group, you know, some, they're the student. Yeah, the parent background in the hospital. Look like they are easily. To find the the school, which they want to go to. Without order, not that type of sense. And how how to apply, how to prepare.
Continue to explore expansion of healthcare education opportunities for students. I think that's great, and also the Department of Labor has published that 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 is still one of the number one. Expanding, rightly expanding professions is within the healthcare industry.
Yeah, yeah.
People are aging.
It's a competitive or the.
Yeah, right, nurses make good money.
Yeah.
In no time, yeah.
Yeah.
That should been enough.
I I would, I would like to expand on that is, I would love to see. Like a, the creation of a. Work for, like a job board and an internship board, a website that the kids could access. So if if the community submits various things, or we could. Tunnel through, we could just do some sort of AI search for jobs that would apply to students level, you know.
Can we somehow combine the patterns to. Normal patterns would kind of offer the job to.
Yeah, like somebody could host, host on a job board for the Merino students. I mean, even down to just babysitting, I know that some people would would love that, and I'm sure it actually would help parents too, but. To have that resource.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's a great idea.
You know, like, we provided internships for a number of certain critical students.
Wow.
But it was always through word of mouth, you can just have a board or somewhere.
That is, that'd be great, it should be part of our.
Right.
That we get somebody asked.
Yeah. Um, I I'm gonna, yeah, well.
Would there be live related issues?
Um, I think you could say it is not associated with, you know.
Advertising? Or?
I'll just look into it, yeah, that may be why we didn't do it in the past, but I don't know, it could go through, I'm gonna talk to the counselors. Possibly.
Yeah, could you stand alone, doesn't have to be your.
Well, it's it's part of their exploration into careers, right?
They have to still.
You think you want to be an attorney.
Until you're in that environment, you see what they go through, and you can.
Yeah.
Culture by different.
Industries and stuff, I think that'd be. I would love a more integrated student store experience. I don't, I don't know where that goes, maybe that's in the goal C, but like the high school student stores is totally separate. Of your website that you have to search through, like ASP. It's just hard to find, I would say.
The student store?
Yeah, for all of them.
Okay, I'm gonna put that in the parking lot. I'm gonna put that here now, okay.
No, 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 I know, just something to work on, that we need to.
Uh, Dr. Richter, you have any? I mean, I'm the. Bobby. There's even all the.
Yes, thank you for asking, Mr. Chang. I'm wondering, you know, we talked about appreciating. Ourselves and what we've done in the last few years with regards to programs and services. And innovation, do we want to include that term innovation, especially if we're talking about moving towards AI? Integrating AI into the programs that we currently have, I think innovation is a huge draw to prospective families. And it speaks to the future. And and so speaking of that, do we wanna put here? Integrated approach to AI.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And. Oh, I'm sorry. I I. Would like, what about integrating character education into the curriculum?
We're doing that already at the elementarys and the middle school, high school.
Healthcare.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're already doing that through like second step. Curriculum, where everybody belongs, the web program, I'm sure that the lead crew has that, but it doesn't happen that.
At the point that that continues to support.
Yeah.
It just.
Characteristic.
Test, yeah.
Yeah, because we can certainly find that character.
That's like social emotional learning. Do we have career readiness anywhere in there? In this and that.
Here, right, we had career rate, well, I mean, prepare students for postgraduate success is career readiness, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So with this four goal, I would want to address for the last. Goal C.
Well, you don't have to have a goal C, right, I mean. You do that, and we're doing it well, it's already implemented, right? We have employee of the month, we are being more service oriented, and then with this one. We're saying now that all all of our employees are gonna be responding to emails and calls within 24 hours. Right, so that actually incorporates some of the components of. Service value and appreciation, right, be more service oriented, so it's kind of in the other goals. Education responsiveness. Fostering a culture of. Community, it's gonna be trickling in through these four goals here.
Yeah.
Alright, so anything else on AI for prepare students for postgraduate success, integrated approach to AI kind of covers it, right? Okay, are we good? Good? Alright.
So we're finishing the goal?
Yes.
So we're trying to say ten twenty five, I got, I see this most.
Successful.
Okay.
I have one more.
Okay. Stretch out, sorry, sorry, this is one of my thing, yeah, okay.
Can we somehow? I mean, this is my thought, I mean, I didn't discuss with anybody, but can we somehow? Appreciate more through teacher and staff.
Yeah, that that's a previous for C.
That's the preview?
Oh, that's really, and I said, how we want to the choice.
Yeah, I'll try that, because now, because appreciate teacher is really important, because if we appreciate teacher, then we can potentially detain that goal. You know, goals, you know. I don't need a goal for that, I have to do that without it.
You don't need a goal.
I don't need a goal for that.
We do it really well.
I will do that even without a goal, I will do that.
Think about, think about the the work that our PTA does to recognize our teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week. They get massages, car washes, give ours lunch, you name it, they.
They walk dogs.
I don't know, I don't know, that could be that suggestion for the PTA. But we bought the jerseys this year, right, with their start date, so we feel like we are. Really doing our best, our very best to appreciate and recognize teachers, we have a monthly. Employee recognition program now under the direction of Dr. Rose. We have really taken that to new heights, and we're gonna continue to do that as part of our work. So that program has been implemented, the board has achieved its goal, and we're gonna continue to do that. But thank you, I love that you wanna do that, that's so important, it really is. Appreciate it, employees are hardworking, loyal employees. Alright, Dr. Richter had a question.
If I can, our our department has done a lot of work around what. Ms. Ryan said about how are we preparing our students post-graduation? And we don't know what those jobs are gonna look like. And so we've been doing a lot of work with, particularly with our elementary, because it's a lot easier with elementary. Do project-based learning, inquiry-based learning, constructivist learning, to really, they're not given, they're just given a problem. And they have to work collectively to solve a problem, and I I would love to see more of that happening, I don't know if we need a goal for that, I think that will fall under innovation as well. But I think that's really important as we think about how are we preparing our students for jobs that haven't even been created yet.
I I think I I like to put in, you know what, actually. For this school this way. When they choose to stay in the San Marino, and they have a lot of expectation in the future on their tip. So so in the elementary, a lot of imagination, either what they can be, I'm there. So I I I think also it's very important in the elementary and the middle school. In the meantime, we are teaching them that, including a character, including the. In in, you are there skilled. Go to the high school, or those which we need to promote, and then let the. The 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 parent know, otherwise, instead of parent, look like. Or me, the elementary and the middle school are like easygoing, and they're not sure what. The 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 school is, we go by, and they are still they can learn. Instead of maybe just see the parent, the. The fundraising event. So I I I think we we need to promote you guys doing this, yeah, yeah, I think it's very important. And then they they will realize there's a big difference between. between, uh, San Marino school history, uh, the elementary and middle school and outside, the, the, the school, yeah, so, so I, I, I think we need to, I definitely emphasize.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, emphasize elementary education?
You, you mentioned, uh.
Oh, I put that here, prepare students for jobs that haven't been created.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I too.
Yeah.
Prepare students for jobs that haven't been created yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
So, uh, we finish the goals again, right?
Yes, we have.
And either we continue, I, I need to adjourn or the, this, we just, uh.
Yeah, we're gonna adjourn.
We're gonna adjourn.
And then, yeah, some of us are breaking up to do different things, and then.
Okay.
Jennifer's gonna help me do. I'll have a massage.
Okay, I.
I have a massage.
Thank you so much for all the bold number and.
But we, we're back at eleven o'clock for photographs, so don't, like, go home, like I was suggesting.
Only I can power, yeah.
That's just me.
Oh, you.
They, they me.
You, you're gonna finish, okay.
Okay, so, uh, we'll finish it, uh, this morning, the, the goal setting for twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six. Thank you so much for, for you, and right now, I'm going to adjourn the, uh, today, uh, strategy, strategy planning, and can I have a motion?
Move to.
Any second.
Second.
So for, uh, Mr. Song.
Right.
Uh, Mrs. Lam.
Aye.
Uh, Mrs. Shishi, uh, Ryan.
Aye.
Uh, Mrs. Gia.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Chen, I, motion carry, okay, this is adjourned meeting, thank you.
Yes.
So.